I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise with the place of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our May 19th Select Board meeting. And this is a big event. I've never looked down the table here and seen all the board members here in the same room at the same time for odd year and a half, at least that. I mean, it's helps with having the Zoom and the connection. You know, a lot of folks that can attend our meetings without being here. But it's, I'm glad to see everybody face to face like this. It's, it works out really well. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our May 5th Select Board meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Salute.
Second. Lee Dakin's the message, the motion. Lee Gustafson's the second. Anybody have any changes, corrections, additions, omissions, or any issues with the, with the minutes?
Not at this time for me.
None.
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I think this was mentioned last meeting, but I really love the lines.
I think somebody did mention it.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, yeah, the numbers of the line. Yeah, it's helpful, thank you.
It makes it quick, quick and easy to reference something instead of, you know, paragraph, page, this, that, and the other thing.
Right, yeah, the page numbers are really helpful.
Yeah, it's working out well. Next item is citizens' comments. If there is someone here that would like to speak to the board or address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Anybody that's joining, joining us through Zoom? Excuse me. Anything from previous meetings, Julie?
Just, I enclosed in your packet a letter that I had received from a Nicholas Boeck with, again, expressing his opinion about the paper of record.
Yep.
Just sharing that.
Everybody got that in their packet? All right. Hearing no more citizens' comments, or not hearing any citizens' comments, I guess. We'll head to old business. And Julie, can you take us through our old business, Lynn?
I can. Public Safety Building, the floors are done. Looks phenomenal in there. Windows and doors are pretty much in. If you've driven by the building anytime in the last day or two, you'll see that siding is going up and you'll see the windows in the corner in the police department side are in. It's really coming together nicely. Some guidance has come in from Congress regarding the ARPA money, the use of the ARPA funds. I am looking for a little bit more clarification. It's a 160-page guidance document in Congress language. So I believe I can use that money for some of the cost overruns on the building, but I am waiting to get a concrete yes-you-can. I don't want them coming, taking, doing a take-back five years from now. So once I know more about that, I will let you know and keep you apprised.
Julie, would that be with just the Safety Building, or could we use it also with the town garage?
I, I know for certain that we cannot use it for the town garage.
No.
No. My feeling of why I think we can use it for emergency services is because it's public.
No.
And it's a project that we were work, that we were working on that has a direct COVID impact in that we were constructing, there were cost overruns directly related to COVID. So that's where I'm trying to make my case. But I do know it can't be used for, for the town garage. So if we could just simply get our contingency back on the Public Safety Building, then that could roll to the Highway Garage and that would give me what I would need for play. So I'm just waiting for some clarity on that. And I'll let you know as soon as I have that clarity. Town pool, the security cameras are going in. We got a quote on that. They should be installed in the next, I think, next week. The internet has been put in at the town pool, so I believe everything is ready to go. We're just waiting on the cameras to come in the mail.
Julie, did we get any information about the, who caused, who might have caused the damage?
I know the guys are still working on it. It is connected to some vandalism in some other towns. So there is an open case and it's a case that is not just Chester. It's Chester, I believe, also Ludlow, and I believe Springfield as well. So it's kind of a merged municipality case. And unfortunately, nobody seems to have security cameras to get any idea of who was doing it. So unfortunately, all the towns are now installing them.
So is the liner being replaced?
So Renesiss is coming. They are the ones who installed the liner a couple of years ago. Renesiss is from Indiana, so we are having to fly them out here. Nobody local will make the repair.
Those are so much fun.
I know. Nobody local feels comfortable making the repair with the way it was torn in connection with the jets. And so Renesiss is out. We have submitted to our insurance company. I do believe the cost will be upwards of $3,000 to $4,000 to replace it. So we did submit it to insurance. So it will be done in time for pool season, that we know, as long as nothing else happens with Renesiss. They are planning to be here soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie, are there going to be signs put up, you know, security cameras in place? And, okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because you can say what you want. Security, if they know what they're doing, they're going to cover their faces and all that, so. But maybe a warning, extra warning may be helpful.
Absolutely. No, there will be. And these can, this camera system will be, will have a feed that goes to the police department. So from a screen, a monitor that is in the police department, those cameras will be, can be viewed 24/7 and recorded. The feed is recorded. So it's the same system that we're actually installing at the Emergency Services Building. It's all going to connect. And then what, when the Highway Garage is done, we'll be installing cameras over there. There, again, will connect to the same system.
Is there a yearly fee that's associated with that? Once the cameras are in for like storing all the data and?
It's stored on our server.
On our?
On our server.
And so it's all up to us, what we want to do with it, how often it gets wiped and starts over?
Correct. Part of that price was a, it's a separate server for that purpose. Yeah, yeah. So no annual fee. Unfortunately, we have to go that route. You know, the whole system was $7,000. It's unfortunate we have to spend that, but, but we do. So signage? I had forwarded to you guys the letter that I had written to Secretary Curly regarding the Travel Information Council and our approval of our wayfinding plan that yielded some response. And so we now have a hearing on May 24th. Patrick Olsted from SE Group, whom I've been working with, and I will be presenting our plan to the TIC on the 24th and hopefully will be getting approval that day. So we did get some response there.
Got to ruffle a few feathers to get a response.
Well, I had to go to Secretary of ACCD in order to get it. And what prompted it was Sean Cunningham went on the, you know, the governor's, when he speaks the Tuesdays and Fridays, reporters are allowed to ask questions. He asked the question.
Usually COVID-related, but.
Yep, but he asked the question on that. And that is what sparked some, I have no idea what you're talking about, we'll look into it. And then I followed up the next day with the email to Secretary Curly. So I think, so thank you to Sean, if you're on, for getting that started. That's what started it, which was very helpful. So I am learning to reach out to those people more quickly. That's what they're there for. So I should have reached out to them a long time ago.
Well, with COVID and everything else that was going on, we had a little patience with it.
It's a coin drop policy. We are drafting that. I haven't forgotten about it. You'll have it for your next, for your next meeting. And then the gravel pitch. If you are anywhere near there, you will see that most of the trees are down. Brian Smith went in, cleared the extraction sites. So he's finishing up some work up there and then the Highway Department will get going on the roads and culverts and those types of things. But we are proceeding.
How did that work as far as the cost? Is it a cost to the town, or does he just get the lumber, or what deal?
It's a cost to the town, so it was a budgeted number. We had budgeted, I think, I think I had put in $6,000 or $7,000. He was able to do it for that. But he does feel that there is some lumber there that we'll get back as well.
Okay.
As he walked, and certainly there's going to be enough firewood for the Highway Department for quite a period of time.
They got enough for two years over the garage right now.
Yes. A lot of firewood for the Highway Department, so.
After we get that building insulated, it'll be a decade.
Maybe we could raffle it, the firewood.
Well, there you go.
Just creative fundraising or something.
And then.
That's great that that's working out.
Yes, that's working out. We're still, you know, the appeal is still underway, but it doesn't preclude us from beginning the other.
No matter what, it looks like we'll be extracting gravel.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Great. It's been a long time coming.
It's been a very long time coming. Yep, very long time coming. And then last but not least is the ambulance. So lots of changes to the ambulance department. Because a lot of you know, Dan Cook, who was our ambulance coordinator for 33 years, has retired or resigned from that position. I am working on a retirement party for him. So I will keep you in the loop. Actually, Amy's kind of coordinating that for me. So that'll be coming, I think we're looking at June 7th at the moment, but I'll confirm. Wednesday? Oh, is it 9th, June 9th?
It's going to be Wednesday.
Right, okay. That's what we're looking at, time and those types of things, I will, we will keep you posted on. And we are, you know, based on the assessment that we had done, there is a restructuring taking place in the ambulance department. Amanda has slid into the position of ambulance chief and is doing very well, getting things kind of turned around a little bit. And we are, we do have seven people interested at this time to get certified for Chester ambulance. So she will be conducting those interviews to make sure that it's, you know, people that we want to accept into our service. But she is also in the process of getting somebody to sign off on her, I forget what they call it, somebody to sign off on her so that she would be able to teach the EMT class and we would be able to hold it at our new building, which would be a great kind of kickoff to our new service. So she has found a provider that will sign off on her teaching. And so we're just going through the paperwork piece for that. So exciting things coming. So I'll keep you posted, though, on Dan's retirement party.
Dan Cook, Dan Cook has been a fixture in this town.
Absolutely.
A long time.
Correct.
With his volunteer service, with the ambulance service, with his work with the Highway Department. And he's going to be missed.
He is going to be missed.
He's been a part of this community for a long time and I just want to thank him for all the years of service that he's done to this town and what he's brought to the town, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. And he is still on his highway. He is still working for highway.
Great.
Julie, I, I noticed you, you had a coin drop policy that's being worked on here. I just wanted to mention it. I think when we discussed this last year, maybe Heather brought up that we should limit, limit the number of times to, I think, four, and I think that's plenty. I mean, if, if somebody really wants to do, it's nice to have these ser, these people that are trying to raise money for good causes, but I don't think we should have too many. I agree with her, four is plenty. And if they, the first come, first served, first to come in here and apply for it.
Yeah. And one of the things that Lee had mentioned at the last meeting was not having them back-to-back.
Right.
So Ruckup had come in and asked for permission and you guys will be doing that later in the agenda. But it was like right on the tail of, of the Legion doing there. So we had asked for there to be a break in the middle of that. So that's kind of some of the language that I'm working with Lee on.
And by the way, I don't, I don't recall saying four, thanks for agreeing with me. I don't know what the number is and I think I was hypothetical that we should keep it to a certain number.
Right. I think four is a good number for, because it's mostly going to be in the summer.
Yeah.
And, and we don't want to jam up the streets, haul something along.
And that'll be an agenda, hopefully on your next agenda.
What will happen, Jeff, is we'll have a draft policy come forward and we could discuss it and look at it, tweak it which way you think we could have this discussion about all the different parts of it that go into it. Something that makes sense for us.
And I think, you know, that they used to, for the, used to have Chester-oriented services that we were providing these coin drops. And I think that's really important to keep in mind. So that we're not overwhelmed with it. I think, you know, I was thinking one a year would be great. The Legion wanted to do it once a year.
So there's going to be negotiations?
Yeah, there will be negotiations.
Well, this will be a first draft and we could take it from there.
Absolutely. This is going to get you a template to start with, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I will put something in about supporting Chester.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about that part, so I'll put that in.
That's it?
That's it for me, yes, I'm sorry.
Any board members have any old business that'd like to discuss?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I interject again?
No, you can, okay.
You know me, I'm going to anyway. The Emerald Ash.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So we have a meeting Monday night at 6:30 where we will, we will be having our training on how to identify an ash tree. And the app, the state is letting us use their app for collecting our inventory that everybody can just download onto their phone. And so that training is via Zoom. It will be on the website, you can, it's not Zoom, I'm sorry. It's actually GoToMeeting, I think.
Town website.
It'll be on the town's website and you can get in there. So anybody that is interested and willing to do, you can just do your section of road. It doesn't have to be like, I don't need you to do all 97 miles. You know, if you can just do your section, it would be really, really helpful.
And has the response, do we know yet?
Well, we have a core group of what, it's like seven or eight of us, I think. But I think there's, I think that there are several of the Greenup Day people that are, we're kind of taking that same approach of, you know, you green up your section of road, if you could, you know, do an inventory of your section of road. And if a core group of us can get trained, then we can then train our subgroups. That's kind of the theory behind it. So.
And are you sure that you're going to be able to train people to identify an ash?
I am sure that I will not be able to, but I know that I have people on this committee that will be able to.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this learning, because I have so many trees on my property.
Do you have some lore to add from something else?
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, clever.
That's a plus.
Monday is the 24th.
Are you from a head to wall?
At 6:00 PM.
At 6:30.
6:30.
6:30, Monday at 6:30.
That's the 24th.
The 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, I will not interject again, although I can't make that promise, but go ahead.
Any other, any other old business? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is an event that was, I guess it was scheduled for last year.
Yes.
And Astrid and, I don't know, your last name is Brandish?
Hoyt.
Hoyt. Well, that's a lot easier. So Julie, you want to give us a little, a little background on this? Or Astrid, would you like to give us some background on this?
I would say let's just go right to Astrid. Astrid came in, talked with me and Matt and.
So you got to come over to the microphone.
And you can move it, Astrid, you can sit right in the front if you want. Yeah, no, sit right in the front bench there and, there you go. That works. I think you're close enough.
Uh, try to get it close.
There you go.
We can hear you, but it has to go out over the Zoom land there.
Awesome. Should have enough practice in the last year, right, on Zoom?
Yes, we all have.
Yeah, hi folks, I'm Astrid Bradish Hoyt. There's the long version of Chester. I would love to bring six hours on Lover's Lane to our park. It's a six-hour format race for folks that's sort of a entry-level ultra marathon, although it's not often that folks get in a full 30 miles, which is anything longer than a mile is an ultra, by doing two-mile laps at the park. And it's a great format for folks that are interested in a race like this, where they can do, do one lap and call it good. It's whatever they want to do with the six-hour format. And as somebody who's been running ultras now for about nine years, I wanted to bring the event in 2019 and then had an invitation to Spain. So I spent a little time there that summer and would like now that the things are opening up to host the event in Chester with, with your blessing. And I can answer any information, any questions you might have about the event and what that might look like and what we're, what I'm thinking about for, and bringing folks to our amazing community, especially the park. My gosh, the park is just an amazing place.
So this would work on Lover's Lane and you do the loop all the way up the hills and then you come back down to Route 11?
So it would be on the, the Pinnacle Hills, sort of the.
On the hill back there.
Yeah, below the.
The golf.
The disc golf course and then on to, if we can get permission again from.
Vermont Forestry.
Vermont Forestry to do a, it's about a little over half-mile section of their trail and then come back to where Matt McCarthy's shack is, the rec shack. So the start-finish would be there.
And so if you're doing it for six hours, obviously you would do the loop multiple times. You know, people can do it as many times as they want.
Just capitalizing on the, on the location for a funny name.
That's great, that's great. So you're really not on Lover's Lane?
Correct, just.
It's the, the park area and the hill behind there and some other property that heads up those old snowmobile trails that run through there and stuff.
But for years, I felt like I was the only one running, which I didn't mind. Me and Aggie, my dog, were thrilled. And I'm so glad to see more folks coming out there in the.
Event is going, we talked through that. The event is going to benefit Turning Point, which is an organization that, that Astrid works for and the Chester Rec Department. And because it's a town event, our insurance does cover. So we'll be fine.
And we'll have first aid? The 100-mile one, they have a lot of first aid, right?
Yeah, they, we've, we've, we've sort of done away with that with the 100. And this would be, there would be a disclaimer that we have Band-Aids and. And, and the great thing about the ultra community is they're, they're not road runners. They, they're a little bit more hardy and know that if, if anything I do is, is my own darn fault. And they say it a little differently in a lot of races.
We could certainly, though, I mean, if we wanted to, we could certainly see if we could get one of our EMTs to hang out, you know?
I, I don't want to abandon people if they're hurt. I work in an emergency department, so I would love to be able to connect people to services if they were injured. Yeah, not to.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a really good question.
Any other questions from board members?
No, it sounds like three.
I would hope everybody would come out and at least see what the silliness is about.
Absolutely.
How many, how many miles do people usually run?
The frontrunners typically on something with like around 300 feet of elevation and on jeep trails.
How?
How much? It's a, the loop, I have a map, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have brought it forward. It's, it's about 320 feet of elevation gain and loss per loop. It's, I think the front folks could do about 33 miles, 34 miles.
Would that elevation change if people?
Yeah. And then the front people, like, I'm not planning on anybody fast would be coming, but they could probably do 45 miles. Somebody was really feeling like they were gunning for it.
I guess.
And so many runners have been missing in-person events, I think it could be a really good draw.
That's pretty serious, running.
It's not my speed.
Is John going to be there, running?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Of course.
He's going to try to decide whether he would run or help, but he probably will get roped into helping.
Sure, sure. Any other questions, any other concerns, anything? So we need a motion on this?
Yep, you just need to authorize the use of the.
So we're looking for a motion to grant Astrid Hoyt permission to use town property on August 14th, 2021, Saturday, for, what's the exact real name for it?
Six Hours on Lover's Lane.
Six Hours on Lover's Lane event.
So moved.
Heather's the motion, Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
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 You're often running.
Yes, you're welcome, you're all set.
Thank you.
You're free to advertise.
That's great, I hope it becomes a yearly event, that's neat.
It'd be awesome. Yeah.
Pinnacle's really getting a lot of use these days.
It is.
The golf, the disc golf was a huge success there.
It's great, and we're getting some events that are starting to be annual. So the annual disc golf event, you know, they're looking to move forward with Mother's Day weekend, you know, every year. The Fall Festival, the wheels in the field. I mean, this could be an annual, it'd be great to have these annual events that build over time. It's a really good draw for us.
And different niches.
Absolutely.
You know, which is really cool.
Yep, absolutely.
Nice. All right. And the next item is the coin drop with Ruckup Incorporated. George Legacey was here at our last meeting to present his case for a coin drop. The only issue that came up with it was basically, and it was a good point, that it was close to the other one. So we reworked it and they're looking for permission for August 14th, or the rain date of August 50.
That's the same day as Pinnacle race.
I know.
Okay.
I guess it's.
It's all right, they'll be at that end of town.
That's true.
So I mean, everything's the same, we've discussed it, we've gone through it, we've had the presentation from George and the organization and we were all on board with, with, the consensus was approving the, the event. And the only thing we really did was change the date on it and stuff. But we need a motion to approve this.
Do I have a question first?
Sure.
On this, the, the application for authority to conduct this. Do you have a copy that has the bottom filled out as well? I mean, it's completed by the Agency of Transportation, will that come to us?
So they require, they require the local sign-off before the state signs off?
Or the state's.
Before, before the state. It has to go town, then state.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah.
It used to be the other way around, but they changed it.
They switched it.
I know. And I know that we heard him and everything. I guess I would prefer, I'm not going to not go along with it if the rest of the board wants to, but I prefer to have the policy done. Take a look at that before we approve it, because that's just what I would prefer.
Well, I see your point about the policy, but you kind of gave them permission at our last meeting. So I don't want to take that back. Because we didn't have them done our homework, because we have discussed this before, the policy. And, and it gave us a little incentive to look into it and get a policy going and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I need a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the request by, excuse me, Ruckup to perform their coin drop collection on August 14th, 2021. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff's the motion, Lee, was you on the second? No, the other way around.
Lee was the motion, Jeff was the second.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Can we sign this here?
Yeah, this one right here on this.
Do we have a pass?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. The next item on our agenda is the Chester Community Greenhouse Committee is here to give us an update. Robert Need is here, Tim Roper. I guess online we have some more folks, Cheryl Joy Lipton, Emily Berkland, and I'm not sure if this lady is connected.
Beat Patricia.
Patricia? Who was that again?
Melody Reed.
Melody Reed, all right. Just wanted to make sure I got everybody in there. Robert, go ahead.
Thanks, thanks. Hi, everybody. Thanks to Julie for getting us on the agenda and thanks to the Select Board for giving us an opportunity to update you again on the status of this project. We had given a couple of other appointments over the last year or so. And at that time, we kind of described what the project is and what we hope to accomplish. So rather than cover that territory, I wanted to bring everybody up to date on where we are and what we anticipate as the next steps. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was funding. And just as a little bit of background, those of us who are working on this and we're kind of, it's been pretty intense, we kind of get the feeling like we've been doing this for five years. But it's actually, it's really important to kind of think of this as a very short. of think of this as a very short timeframe. It was really a year ago that we first started talking about a community greenhouse as something we'd like to bring to Chester. And it was less than a year ago that we took possession of an historic greenhouse and watched it being taken down and transported it into Chester. Shortly after that, we became a Vermont nonprofit corporation. We got IRS status as a charitable, tax deductible organization. We started developing strategy and project plans and talking about what kind of programs we would offer. So it's really been a relatively short time for us. But in terms of funding, I just wanted to point out that when we took this on, things happened rather quickly. We spent some money to make this thing move forward. And here we are, a year later, we've paid all our bills, we have money in the bank, and we're actively suing, pursuing grants. So we're, we're in a pretty good position. We now have a six-person Board of Directors. Kate has joined us. Kate Matricia has joined our board. She was volunteer for a couple of months and then we realized she really needs to be on the board, so she was elected to the board. She's an extraordinarily focused and enthusiastic person who's really spending all of her time looking for money and figuring out how we can fund this thing. And Kate has already identified a number of grants that we think are not only a good fit, but they're fairly significant. So if we were able to qualify for these grants, it would fund a good portion of the project. Over the next couple of weeks, we will be submitting applications for two of those grants through the USDA. They're from their Agriculture and Rural Development Fund. And we feel pretty confident that we can make a good case for those. Something else that Kate has been working on that I think is even more immediate and interesting is she's been keeping an eye on what's going on in Washington and the availability of funds with the COVID recovery, economic recovery stuff. Kate opened up a channel of communication with Senator Sanders' office and has been talking to his staff about our project and getting feedback from them. And as of last week, we submitted a formal application for what's called a congressionally directed appropriation. So in other words, we're asking Senator Sanders to include our project in Chester on the list of projects that he will advocate for in front of the Senate Appropriations Committee. So if we were able to get that, we'd get direct federal funding. And in the amount that we are asking for would be sufficient to pay for the entire project minus a few bells and whistles. So we're, we're pretty excited about that and optimistic about it as well. Shortly after that, we filed a similar application with Senator Leahy's office. So how the process would work is one or both of the senators collaboratively or individually would go to the Appropriations Committee, say, I have a list of projects in my home district. This is what I'd like to see funded. And then they would appropriate the funds to the projects they thought were worthwhile. The funding would be available in the spring of 2022 and would have to be utilized by September of 2022. That is consistent what, what we think a timeframe, a reasonable timeframe would be for us. So if we get those fundings, that funding, we can, we can make the project work. So again, we feel pretty confident. I think we made a good, strong case to the senators that the project is not only good for Chester, but also could potentially be a model for other communities who want to do similar things and address similar issues that we want to, like food insecurity, local food production, programs in collaboration with the schools, continuing education for adults who want to learn things in what essentially will be a really unique laboratory to learn in. So we're very optimistic. Regardless of how the funds, how we get the funds to fund this, and, and we're, we're confident we're gonna get funded. We're all committed to this. Our heart's in it. We have people on the board who have a lot of nonprofit experience, grant writing experience. So we're pretty sure we're gonna get the funding. But one of the things we really are focusing on is sort of a second part of our mission, which is if we get the funding, not only do we get the greenhouse up, not only we start offering programs, but we spend that money locally. We use local contractors, we use local labor, local materials, everything from site preparation to concrete, to electrical and plumbing, to lumber for raised beds, to soil and compost. If it's available locally, that's where the money's gonna go. So not only do we get to create this project that can provide services to the community, we get to contribute to the local economy as well. So the next thing I wanted to get to was siting and location.
Can I ask a question, Robert? I'm sorry to interrupt, but what's the amount of money that you're asking for and what's the amount of money you need to complete the project?
We're asking for enough to get the project built and operational. There's some additional funds that we would like to have for extra add-on kind of things, which we think will be an enhancement. We've asked both senators for $500,000. Thank you. So in terms of siting, the last time I was here, I mentioned that we put together a site selection committee and also a comprehensive matrix on what requirements we were gonna have to address to cite this thing. And just to give you an example, some of the things that we know we need to consider are compliance with local zoning and state environmental regulations, walkability. We want the site to be accessible, people to walk to it, encourage them to walk to it rather than drive. It needs to be in proximity to the Village Green, local businesses and the schools. It needs to be, wherever we put it, it needs to be compatible with the local neighborhood. That's really important. We would prefer it had existing parking, so we wouldn't have to expand or develop any parking. We need a site that can accommodate the orientation of the greenhouse to maximize the solar exposure. I mean, we want to open this thing as a three-season facility and hopefully with technology move to around the clock. But we can only do that if it's appropriately oriented. And we also want to pick a site that would, we would have to do minimal disturbance to that site. We don't want to have to deal with a site where we have to clear trees or we have rock ledges, or we're gonna encroach on river corridors or riparian buffers. We want to have a light footprint, if at all possible, both because it's the right thing to do and also because it'd be far less expensive not to have to deal with those things. So we looked at a lot of properties. We had, the Board of Directors was out on snowshoes to look at properties to make sure that they were appropriate, that met some of the criteria, but not all of the criteria. And we were really lucky. We had people come forward and say, hey, I'd like to recommend this site. And we had people come forward offering to give us a site, which was pretty amazing and pretty exciting because it really gave us a sense of the support and enthusiasm in the neighborhood. But there was one site that was offered to us that we were very much interested in, and it's a good illustration of kind of how complex this thing has gotten, because we needed to apply the standards that we developed for that site. Great site, near the green, beautiful location. The owners were really enthusiastic. But no matter how we oriented the greenhouse, we could not meet the setbacks that are in the zoning bylaws. So as frustrating as that was, we tried to consider what are alternatives and we really had two. We could pursue a variance or we could negotiate lot line adjustments with the neighbors. Having a zoning background, I knew that making a case for a variance was unlikely. So we thought about asking the adjacent property owners for a lot line adjustment. And then we stepped back and thought, this is a community project. We need to keep it a community project. And the last thing we want to do is impose on potential neighbors. And it just, it didn't feel right. It didn't feel consistent with our method, our mission. So we withdrew that site from consideration. So after six months of intensive search, we have identified two sites that meet all of the requirements that we established in the matrix, tick a lot of boxes. One of those sites, which is our site of preference, goes well beyond. It has many extras. Both sites are town-owned property. Here's where I take a breath and let that sink in. So we're here today essentially with a really big request, which is, would the board consider allowing us to use that property in some manner or form to be decided later on? We think it would be a really unique and positive partnership between the town and a nonprofit. We think it brings a lot of benefit to the town, but ultimately, the decision would be up to the select board as to whether this is appropriate, the community would be happy with the decision, and whether or not it's in the best interest of the community. And we recognize that. And we recognize that it's gonna take a lot of discussion, a lot of research, probably conferring with the town attorney and all of that stuff. So we put it out there. Right now, that's the way we can move forward. Those are really the only two properties we've identified. If, if we can't do that, we could push farther out to the limits of the town and possibly find a new set of properties. But it doesn't, it doesn't accomplish exactly what we'd like to accomplish. The economic development piece would be reduced, the walkability piece, the enhancement to the community, the connection to, you know, the historical structure with the historical downtown, that would be hard to accomplish. So we throw it out there and ask you if you would consider it, discuss it, and let us know. We'd be happy to answer any questions through that process and cooperate with any agreement that needed to be produced. And obviously defer to you in terms of what the terms would be and the town attorney to what the terms would be. So I wanted to just real quickly talk about the two sites. The first site, which is clearly the preferred site, is the property behind the Academy Building. It would be to
Let me just turn this, because I have them up here. It would be to the west of the property, towards the western property line, in the back of the property, towards the creek with appropriate setbacks. It, it is just the preferred site for just so many reasons. It's, it's a beautiful scenic site. The historic nature of the greenhouse itself, built in 1936, is really unique. It's so unique that the very blueprints for this are on file at the New York Botanical Gardens. This is a really special structure. It seems a really good fit with historical downtown, being close to the Historical Society Building. It, it seems to make, make sense. We know there's been a lot of discussion lately at the DRB and with the Conservation Committee about walking trails back up on the hill behind the cemetery and some discussion of an ADA compliant pedestrian bridge. That again seems like an awful good fit. We intend to have at least part of the greenhouse be ADA compliant, so we can have people come in there who have disabilities and mobility issues. And the walking trails would draw people, the greenhouse would draw people, and we think it would really be an additional destination and attraction and really compatible with that idea. It's certainly walkable. It's close to the green. It's close to the businesses. So people visiting the greenhouse or working in the greenhouse, they're gonna need to have lunch, they're gonna need to buy hardware and tools. It's right there. It's a, it's a really kind of mutually beneficial relationship. In terms of the solar exposure, the site is perfect. We could actually orient it, gable ends east to west, meaning the longest end of the greenhouse would face due south. We had professional solar evaluations of both sites done. They were donated. And this site came back as averaging 80% of possible sunlight, which is really good. Certainly good enough to make that three-season operation pretty easy and will help us with the fourth season as well. There's no need to develop parking. There's plenty of parking on the street, in front of the information building and in front of the Academy Building and obviously in the green. There's even a handicap spot dead in front of that, that building as well. There is a potential for restroom access, and I know this would need to be discussed later, in the information building or the Academy Building. That would be really helpful. That means that now or in the future, we wouldn't really have to consider compostable toilet or even a restroom of any kind, because maybe we could leverage that, you know, to be discussed. And really, I think the important thing is that, that area is like the epicenter of visitor and tourist activity. I mean, in the fall, that's where you see people standing in the middle of the street on the yellow line taking pictures, you know? It's, it's, and what are they taking pictures of? The cemetery, the wall, the flowers, the Hearst Museum, right there. So people are gonna be there. It'd be another reason for them to be there, another attraction. It would be something else that people can talk about that happens in Chester. That's why they go to Chester. That's why they love to visit. Maybe that's why they like to move there, you know, that kind of thing. So we think that would be a really nice addition and help economic development as well. The second site is on Canal Street. It's what's referred to as the Dan Davis Lands or the Pump House parcel. Some positives of that site, it's larger. It's not larger in actual land site, but it doesn't have a big structure on it. So there's more other than the Pump House. There is more room available for us to kind of be flexible with the siting of the thing. It's closer to utilities, proximity to utilities. That would be less expensive for us to connect. It's a short walk to the Swinging Bridge and the Pocket Park, which would be kind of nice. But there are, you know, challenges for us with that site. It's, it's more of an undulating terrain, which means more site preparation, which means more disturbance. We would have to develop parking. I don't think we want people parking on Canal Street. It's really narrow. They'd end up on somebody's lawn or they'd be blocking the road. There's parking on School Street. People could walk to School Street. But again, there's not a lot of parking on School Street and they might end up be parking in somebody's, in front of somebody's house for four hours, which is not great. So with that site, we'd probably have to develop a few parking spots, including a handicap spot on the cul-de-sac of Canal Street. So that's a little more effort. I think the biggest challenge for the Canal Street site is we have a lot of abutting property owners. And, you know, again, this is a community project. You want community support. You don't want anybody unnerved or aggravated or unhappy about a project. So I don't know, maybe everybody who abuts that property would be thrilled with the project, but it's still something that would have to be addressed and have to be overcome if there's any issues. So I want to kind of invite you to ask questions and hopefully between all of us, we can answer. But the last thing I wanted to, the last point I wanted to make was what we're suggesting, I guess, at least initially, is, is a partnership between the town and the nonprofit. But I want to be really clear that we are planning a project that is self-sufficient, that brings something to the community, but is not asking for the community to support it. You know, the, the project would be built by the nonprofit and volunteers. We would raise the money. We would manage the money. We would invest the money. And if we got good at this, like a good nonprofit, we'd create an endowment that would ensure that this thing would be self-sustaining into the future, long after us who kickstarted it are gone. So that is the long-term intention of this. It is a self-sustaining project. We're not gonna come with hat in hand looking for funding. This is gonna be our funding. What we need is the place to put it. We need something like a long-term lease or some use agreement. And then we can get down to business and start offering this to the community. So that's all I have, but I'm, I encourage questions.
That's, that's a lot of information.
I know, I know. And I talk really fast.
It's a lot of exciting information in my eyes.
It's exciting information. And I was present at one of the first
Lee and Heather, you guys, can you move your microphones closer? People in Zoom are having a hard time hearing.
Thanks, Amy.
Do I have to turn it on?
Yeah, you gotta get it pretty close.
But I didn't say anything.
So I was at one of the first meetings we gathered on the green, some people who were very interested in this. And again, I, I thought Canal Street looked wonderful. I talked to some others, because there's a lot of property owners abutting on the Grafton roadside. And one of the thoughts that we talked about that first meeting was having like a farmer's market there. And after more talk with some people, I realized that that really didn't sound like the place. It was, I talked to people who lived around there. So I don't know if that was still part of
of some of the thoughts that you were having about Canal Street, because I think Canal Street's a great spot also. And it is walkable, you know? It's not so much that we'd have to have transportation, we may have handicap spots on the green closer to Canal Street, but it's a nice sunny good. I'm sure your solar people probably gave you a pretty good review on that one too, right?
Yes, it's in the same category, actually a couple of points higher.
Yeah. So I like both of your thoughts.
I think early on, and you mentioned that, I think we were kind of just blue skying at that point, figuring out what would we do, what's the potential? I think we could do all kinds of things, but I think we have to be reasonable. And I'd like to keep it focused on the idea that we're having a multi-season growing opportunity in the greenhouse with some gardens around the outside, and it's also potentially an educational point.
Right.
I'd like to steer away from a big hubbub kind of thing, other than maybe sometime, you know, fundraising dinner inside in the middle of the winter or something, something small, but that would be an individual event that we have to get approval for.
Yep, good.
And again, I mean, we're viewing this as a potential partnership, so we would expect that we would go to you for guidance on what are the parameters of that partnership? You know, you might say, we would be happy if you use this property, but we don't want to see A, B, or C. And we obviously have to respect that because it's not proper.
I have a couple of things. When we first started talking about this, you can, Julie can verify that, I thought Canal Street would be a good spot, and then I get thinking that is a well, and there has to be a 200-foot buffer zone around it, for one thing. But we are working with the state and our water supply about putting a second well up on 103, and if that can be taken, pretty much taken out of service, it's not, it won't pump enough to maintain our system right now. But the state will not, well, talk to us about doing anything different at this point. That's one of the problems. The other problem is we, well, it's not really a problem, we can make it work, but where the building is situated right there is right over a town sewer main. So that can be worked around, but when was your date on...
Well, it depends on the funding, but the congressional funding, the senate funding would be in the spring of 2022, next spring.
Okay. I mean, we've been pushing water supply quite hard to help get, we've done, we've had an engineer checking stuff out and everything, and we're trying to figure out where to put a second well, and we haven't had a lot of feedback yet. And if we can get them to move along and let us know a direction, that would be my choice to put it there. Because the other one, my understanding is that, is that part of the cemetery for expansion?
There has been proposed cemetery expansion there. We're running into issues with that because of the amount of floodplain that comes in. It's not, we can't do in-ground burials in a floodplain.
What about urns?
We can do, we can't do anything in-ground in floodplain.
But she was talking about...
The columbarium things that David had proposed, right. The project never got moving forward past that, kind of more because of the cost that's associated with something like that. And if we were going to expand the Brookside Cemetery over there, we wanted to have a real, like, architectural, architectural design to merge the new with the old. So there was talk about expanding the cemetery over there. Brookside Cemetery is full, for the most part, so we did talk about moving some. We're also going to be looking at expanding High Street for burial plots as well, which is a better fit.
You can see the relationship between there's the, the end of the cemetery, there's the cemetery.
Excuse me, it's Cheryl Joy here.
Go ahead.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we spoke, actually, with regard to the well, we were really concerned about that. And we spoke to both the state and the water department at the state level and in Springfield, and found out that actually there's a five-foot and a 10-foot setback from the well building that is necessary, and that was all. I was surprised to hear that as well.
I was surprised because you can't build over where you're drawing your water from. But if we can get that set aside, then that well, we could downsize the pump and we can use it for water for the greenhouse.
Right. Yeah, they said that, and also it's agriculture, so it's exempt from anything as well being considered agriculture, I believe.
But you couldn't, you couldn't use, you couldn't use fertilizers and stuff like that over an aquifer to a well?
That's what I thought as well, and they said that that was not true, but we don't want to do that at any rate. Well...
I would want that response in writing.
Yeah, get that in writing, because we need to talk...
I think we're all in agreement on that one. We don't want to use chemicals or anything like that.
We are so limited in what we are allowed to do over the town's aquifer on anything.
Yes. So Jeff, you think that if you can decommission that essentially, then it resolves the issue?
It'd be a perfect spot.
That would be the perfect spot.
I would agree with that, but we've got to get...
One issue that Julie did bring up about the Academy Building one is that floodplain. Have you considered that?
We have, and that we have to look at that in terms of how we would structure the building. One of the things that we've already decided that we would do, no matter where we put it, is the, both ends, gable ends would open, and that's one method of dealing with that. If there was a 100-year flood, it would wash through and not take out the building. So that's one approach. But we'd have to look at what we would need to do to mitigate that, if that's the case.
Yeah, because that will require approval from the floodplain coordinator and then also a DRB.
And a DRB, right.
Review as well.
I'd like a tour. I'd like to go to both sites with a group and see, I'm quite visual, you know, like I want to, and I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm really supportive as one member of a five-member board. I'd be really supportive of looking towards one of those two sites and having some kind of relationship. I have no problem. In fact, I think it's a wonderful project. I think it would, either place would be fabulous. So count me in on supporting it. I just would like a tour in the next week or two or before, I don't know if anyone else wants to go.
I think that's a great idea, to take a look at the site and walk around and see exactly what we're talking about.
It really changed our perspective as well when we got on the site, particularly after the snow has gone too, because you can really see the lay of the land, you can see exactly how close you are to things before all the trees, you know, budged out and everything. You could see exactly where everything was, so I think that'd be a great idea.
And it sounds as if most of the board, or I think, is supportive, so maybe Julie, we could have Julie just do a really cursory discussion with the attorney about how involved those kind of things could be.
Sure.
That's my suggestion.
Well, another suggestion, Lee, you wanted to say something?
Well, I have a couple of questions, which I'll ask after you. No, okay. So a couple of things. One is, does the group have a document that lays out the long-term financial prospects of the, of the, I'm guessing it's a 501(c)(3)?
Right.
And then, sorry. And then the other thing is, you know, what your overall objectives are for this particular community project? Because I'd be interested in seeing exactly what your plan is, because you've given us a good idea, but having it in writing is something that, you know, it helps me to read things. Is by having those, or is that just something you brought up?
No, that's something we brought up, just trying to anticipate. There could be reaction. Early on, when we first discussed it, there was a property owner who said, how will this affect our property values, which is a really legitimate question. So we actually, in response, because we don't want to just say of a community greenhouse, kind of a niche thing, on property values, but we found a ton of white papers and studies on the impact of community gardens on property values. And, you know, we're getting close when we're looking at that. Most of the studies were done in a little more of an urban or suburban environment, but then you think about, you know, the village, it's fairly dense. So we thought, you know, that it's meaningful to some degree. And the reports actually said, in close proximity, the property values increased because it was a quality-of-life thing that attracted particularly young couples and all of that stuff with kids, we got a place to take them. And then it diminished to a point of getting neutral as you moved out. But there was not a single study we could find that said community gardens reduce property values. And that's just our honest answer, because that's the only data we could find.
Okay. So, excuse me, regarding vehicular traffic from Main Street toward, to the back of the...
No, no. The only thing we have to see whether we need is, do we need a handicap drop-off? There's already the driveway that goes there. Do we need a place with a sign that says, here, handicap people can be discharged here? But no, we're not anticipating parking back there.
Because I know last, not last year, the year before, for the Fall Festival, the rear of that building was used for parking. There were quite a few vehicles parked back there for vendors or whatever.
I'd rather avoid that, if we can. To your other point, when we talked about sustainability, we've already, at our last meeting, and we meet once a week, we agreed that we were going to, we have bylaws and we have a program plan now in terms of what we'd like to offer, what kind of programs. But we decided that we need to have a five-year plan that we would revisit annually, will include the financials. So it would be a rolling five-year plan, so we'd always be planning for five years ahead. And that would include even an investment policy as part of that as well.
Yeah, my main concern is that, let's say, you put this thing up and it goes great, and then 10 years, something happens, and all of a sudden, the town is not...
At least two of them offered to buy it from us, because it has, it has value. So that can contribute to the decommissioning fund. You got to take it down, you sell it. And we've heard estimates anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000 in value in the greenhouse itself. And I'm not, I don't know that that would sufficiently fund decommissioning, but that could be rolled into the decommissioning fund.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'd just love to see the details.
Okay.
It seems like the select board is consensus and we're all in agreement to support this idea and to try to help it come to fruition and stuff. And a suggestion that I had is maybe two select board members could be part of a committee to join with the greenhouse group to work out all the details, to work out all the fine points, to keep us informed, to keep us in the loop of things and be involved, and ask the questions that the town needs to ask and to have answers to as we go forward with this. I think it would help on the greenhouse side, it would help on our side, that if we combined our forces that way, that would all be working to the same goal. So a committee of two volunteers that were interested in this project and wanted to work on it, I think would be a great way to maybe go about this and try to work out some of the details and try to figure out exactly what we need. You know, I mean, there's probably, there's a lot of questions that we don't even know that we should be asking at this point.
And do you envision these select board meetings going to every single weekly meeting? Or do you see it more as...
Just could figure that out on their own, on what they have to stay involved with or what's important to, you know, be involved with when it comes to the meetings or to the, you know, what's happening and things. Reporting back to the select board when actual motion has to be done or some, you know, formal action has to be taken. But it would give us a lot more information and give us a connection with it and give us the information, I think, that we would need to make a final decision that would work for everybody that's be involved with this. Now, one thing about that property back there, it's seen as that the cemetery expansion, which is, I didn't realize that that was even an issue about the floodplain, about not being able to put bodies in the ground there, changes the whole dynamics of that property, because that was part of the expansion that was happening there. But that being said, that property also, when it was donated to the town, and correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, part of the condition was that there would be some educational purposes for it, which is why that trail is being constructed across the... So the question is, volunteers, well, someone has their...
Volunteer.
You okay, Lee?
Yeah.
And if no one else is interested, I'll do it too, but if there's someone else that would like to...
It'd be nice to have two of us, because sometimes one of us might not be able to come, you know?
No, I'm okay.
Are you okay? I'm okay. I can be your, like, your two back alternate, if you guys don't want to. I don't want to fight anyone over...
It can only be two, because once we have three, it has to go through a holder.
No, no, but if you, if you want, you know, someone else to go to a meeting or something, you know, you can let me know. I'm thrilled with the idea, so...
And we can talk about what makes sense in terms of getting together and talking about this stuff.
I mean, there's a lot of questions that are going to come up. There's going to be a lot of issues and a lot of hurdles that we're probably going to have to get by, but I think if we combine our resources, it would be a good way to go forward. I think it'd be great for the town.
Are there other, are there other board members feeling like they'd like to have a tour of both spots?
I still think that's a great idea.
Okay, so if there's more, then there's three of us, so maybe we could do it at the, start the select board meeting early next time, or I don't know if you guys...
I'd love to see it, sure.
Okay, way down there, if you want.
So do you want me to do, like, a 5:30 site visit?
Perfect.
That's what I think.
Regular meeting afterward.
It'll be June 2nd.
Or whether, like, today, too?
Yes.
Could you do that, please, Julie?
That would be nuts.
That'd be important.
You'd do really good things for us, Julie.
So do you want to do 5:00 or 5:30?
Whatever.
5 o'clock, if we're going to two sites, it's going to take a little time.
So it'll be June 2nd.
I don't want to rush through this.
It'll be June 2nd, 5 o'clock.
What was the date?
June 2nd is our next meeting.
It's my birthday. What a way to celebrate.
Oh, well, there you go. Happy birthday.
So you better bring cake then, right?
Maybe we should bring cake for him.
That's amazing how much you've accomplished in the year since you've acquired it. I mean, I wasn't expecting all that information and all that positive direction.
You know, there's just been so much momentum because it's, even to us, it's still exciting. You know, you're thinking about everything we could do and what the impact is. And we know it's a really big project, but all along the way, there's been so much enthusiasm that we're, yeah, we can do this. I mean, that's what we feel, we can do this. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about it, too.
Robert, can you remind me of the dimensions of the building again?
100 feet long, 32 feet wide.
Okay.
3200 square feet.
And height?
I don't have that number, but I can get that number. Part of the discussion, and I put this model together, and this is still in flux, because we're learning things as we're talking to the subject matter experts. When they deconstructed this, there's, these supports go all the way down to the footing. The deconstruction person cut them off, which is not a real issue, because you talked to the experts on it, and what it just means is they have to adjust this knee wall to accommodate that. And in this model, this was, I built this when we were in a different stage of discussion, the knee wall's actually not going to be this high. It'll be more glass and less wall. But I'll get the dimension of how much it is in the top.
So is that like a two-year-old in front of the building there?
No, this is, this is actually in scale, but the knee wall is too high.
Yeah, I'm going to say that knee wall looks like it's about eight feet.
It would probably be, with the newest calculation, between waist and slightly below chest level.
Okay.
Yeah. This, the model's actually built at HO scale, so this is like HO tree people, HO trees.
Great.
But otherwise, it's relatively accurate.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is, this is an actual artist just rendering just to get some stuff.
Yeah, I was wondering if you were going to show us that. That's beautiful.
Yep. Heather?
Thank you, Larnie. I also don't think it's that unusual for towns, municipalities to work with nonprofits in sharing land or this. It's not like this hasn't been done before.
No, not at all.
So I'm sure there's some legal...
Yep, I'll talk to Jim tomorrow.
I mean, we leased the Historical Society the Academy Building for all those years, and it was pretty simple and it was, you know, not much to it and stuff, but...
Comes down to the documents and laying out...
There's a way to make it happen, I'm sure.
But mentioning, just real quickly, mentioning whether it's unique or not unique, there'd be so many things that'd be really unique about this. We did some research, and this would be the only freestanding community greenhouse in all of Vermont. It would be the only educational greenhouse also open to the public in Vermont. So there's really not many of these. There's a greenhouse at UVM, and there's a greenhouse at Burlington at the high school that's not open to the public.
And believe me, I think you and your whole group and the whole thing's unique, but that relationship is what I meant, between a nonprofit and a... There's probably, you know, towns that own a lighthouse, but a nonprofit takes it, you know? Anyways, that's what I meant. I know you guys... Anyways, that's what I meant. I know you guys are unique. And this is unique.
Work out the details, figure it out. So keep us in the loop. Let us know when your, your meetings are going to be. Get Lee Dakin and myself on your email list so we could, you know, keep together with you. It will be June 2nd. I think that is our next meeting. And we'll do a walk-through on both locations and stuff. I'm very excited about this. It's fantastic news. It really is.
Thanks, thanks for listening.
The work that you guys have done is amazing in a year. It's very much appreciated for what you're doing for this town. And it's a lot of work. I'm sure it is. There's all, everything that happens in the background with grants and buildings and quotes and everything else that you're doing. Volunteers.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or any, anybody else? All quiet out there. Thanks again, everybody. Appreciate it.
Hey, thank, thank you all. We really appreciate it. That was, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, I think. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
See you, guys. Unless they want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, you want to help me get that out of, out of the way?
Take a minute and do what you have to do.
Use the elevator. Those are windy as stairs. What? They get real narrow. I should get down there.
Specifically, you mentioned Lee Burden.
Robert, do you want to take your papers?
Do I want them?
Your paper weren't drawn to take that?
I'm sorry, I got, I got a music standard here.
Yes.
Don't trip. Do not trip. Do not, guys.
Hey, Arnie?
Yes.
Can you ask who Jim is?
Jim Carroll.
Jim Carroll.
Okay. There's a phone number on here as well, that I don't know who the person is. There's a phone number?
If someone that's joined our meeting with a phone number, can you please identify yourself? Hello?
It's 289-3565.
Oops, they just left.
He just hung up.
Oh, they're not. Okay. And then who's on for the library, the Whiting Library? Who's that?
Uh, the Whiting Library. Can someone identify themselves from there who's participating in our meeting? Yep.
Hey.
Oh, it's Carrie.
This is Carrie. Carrie King, okay.
Oh, hi, Carrie. We just had to get her on the list. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our Route 103, Bridge 14 conceptual plans. Vtrans is looking for any comments or concerns from the board regarding this project. I guess our highway department's okay with it. The town's okay with it. We have no issues with it. It's a big state project on the bridge that's towards Smokeshire, I believe.
No, this is the one, this is the bridge that is right after Route 10, the big one.
Oh, over the railroad end, okay.
So the question I had related to the documents that were emailed to us, I'm assuming that the only comments they want are for Bridge 14, the one you just referenced?
Yes.
Because the layout for Bridge 16 is incorrect, so I wasn't sure if we were commenting on that or not.
The email I was sent was about Bridge 14, that first one.
Okay.
The big one.
The big one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess the only question I have is, you know, how much disruption is that going to be to traffic and how long it's going to take, whatever. But I, I don't know that we have a lot of say in that. It's just FYI.
We don't. It's Route 103. I mean, we really don't have much input. I do know they'll be, they're proposing a temporary, so the road will not be shut down. And it is a two-year construction process. I know that as well.
Sounds like a perfect spot for a coin drop.
Blow them up and send them off to the side.
Not through the middle of chest off.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns regarding this project? Hearing none, we'll go on to our next item on our agenda, which is new business and future agenda items. Anybody have any suggestions or recommendations that, for future agenda items that they would like to see? I know we'll be doing the coin drop policy. That's going to be coming up.
I think we need to start reviewing our policies, like, just...
We always say that, we get a little slack in our business and then things get a little busy, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would love to hire an employee, but that's all they did was just review the policies, because I haven't had time to get to them.
Well, and maybe that's something that if we just threw, threw out, threw in the oldest, you know, first.
The one that needs it, yeah.
And that's not saying that you need to do all the work.
I'm the only one that can do, do those, so. It's okay. I will get it added to mine.
No, and you're, you're doing a lot of juggling, so I think you took that.
We'll get there. We'll get there. No, I know. No, we'll get there. We're all good.
We are good.
Anyone, anyone else, any suggestions for future agenda items? No?
I thought of some earlier today, but it's gone out of my head. I didn't write it down.
Yeah, I got to start writing mine down, too.
Next item on our agenda is our executive session for interviewing the applicant for the zoning administrator position. Preston Bristow? Bristow was recommended to us by the Planning Commission's meeting Monday night to take over the position of our planning zoning administrator. In your package you have his cover letter and his resume. And it is up to the board to decide if you would like to speak with Preston, interview him in public. Or we could do it in executive session or just go with the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
And the Planning Commission unanimously...
Supported it.
Supported him, right? Well, I read his resume. I don't have it here at home, and I thought it looked fantastic and his letter.
Big win. That's how it felt to me.
It's a lot of experience.
It does.
Yeah, I, I was very impressed.
Kathy, would you like to speak and give us an update on that meeting regarding the candidate, Preston?
Sure. You were hoping to call tonight, weren't you?
I forgot about that, Martin. Forgot that I'm the zoning administrator and the chair of the Planning Commission. And of course, I should say something. So everyone on the Planning Commission was happy with this possibility. So it covers a lot of ground. There's a great variety of people. And as a zoning administrator, yes, we need a pro. And this is like just in time. I feel like Julie and I are sliding into home, safe, finally. So there's so many things he can bring to the job that we haven't had. And I think this could be a really, a way through the conundrum of bylaws. You know, he's got experience dealing with bylaws. And the way that the other Planning Commission members reacted to him, he's not going to be a lightning rod. He's going to be like a soothing effect. So that could be a really helpful thing for us.
Well, that's, that's great news. I did sit in on the meeting the other night there, and I, I listened to the interview because it was held in an open session. And he seems like an extremely well-qualified candidate. And I think we're extremely lucky to be having him as our zoning administrator. That he's going to be able to hit the ground running.
Right.
He has experience in all different areas. I mean, it was going over the junkyard ordinances and all these other issues that we've had, that we address in our town and stuff. And he had a lot of insight and knowledge about all those aspects of what goes on. And I, I also agree with the Planning Commission that I think he's going to be a great candidate for us as far as that position. Now, Preston, saying all that, I, I think you're out there with us. I appreciate you sitting through another meeting. Monday night was a little long on everybody also, but I want to thank you for putting your, and I want to thank you for joining us tonight. And Preston, this is the Select Board that's here. It's Heather Chase, Lee Dakin, Jeff Holden, and Lee Gustafson. And it's an executive session, but I don't see a need for it.
I don't see a need to.
I don't think, see a need.
And I don't have any questions at this time, and I respect the, the board and their decision and Julie's opinion.
Thank you for raising your hand.
So your next agenda item is to appoint him.
That you're interested.
Great. This should go nice and smooth and easy. The next item on the agenda is to appoint our zoning administrator, our new zoning administrator. And that would be, I would need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Who was the motion?
Lee Gustafson.
Lee Gustafson's the motion to appoint Preston Bristow as our new zoning administrator. And now does this, so an appointment or is it a year thing?
It's an appointment for a three-year term.
Three-year term.
That's what Satchin calls it.
It would be May of 2024.
Correct.
I'm sorry, who was the motion again?
Lee Gustafson.
Lee Gustafson, and who seconded, Lee Dakin?
Yes.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Preston, thank you. It's formal. You're part of...
I appreciate that. Thank you. I look forward to it.
Thank you very much, sir.
So we'll touch base tomorrow, Preston, about the logistics of getting you in here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Wait, he's got a huge resume.
What's the news of the Select Board?
Been on the planet.
I like that.
He has a lot of experience.
Get a lot of stuff.
Okay.
All right. The next item on our agenda is an executive session regarding a police matter to discuss potential civil litigation with counsel. Would entertain a motion?
I move we go into executive session for all the reasons you just stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on this? I have a little bit of...
Arnie?
Yes?
Do you expect any kind of decision tonight?
No.
No, sir.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion. I have a little bit on this one. Jeff, are you going to stay with us or are you going to be...
No, I'm going to recuse myself. Soon as you go into session, I'm going to leave.
All right. Would you like to state now or say that now before the motion passes or you, how do you want to work?
I don't know when I'm supposed to.
I'm not sure. I mean, I don't think it makes sense.
I think I just said it. I think I just said it. I'm going to recuse myself and leave before the executive session.
All right. All right. So all those in favor of going into executive session and inviting Julie Hansen to join us, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. All set?